I just wanted to say that I'm not talking about China, okay?
It'll be just so that I can...
All your forms are clean. You passed the...
Call the meeting of November 13th, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rozanski is currently absent.
Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Daigle.
I have none.
Councilman Hen.
I just have one for Steve Badham or Dave Webb. With regard to consent item number three on the Balboa Newport Light Synchronization Program, I was just curious if everything goes well, when do you think that work might actually be done? Any ability to estimate that?
It's going to be at least a year or more. It's going to go through the process of selection and we'll actually have to develop the plans and implement it. So I'd guess two years before you see something in the final product.
Okay, and do we think this has got a good shot for approval?
You know, I do because they've been funding a lot of these at OCTA. They've been kind of funding all the projects that are coming through, so we've got a good chance here.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Councilman Solich.
I have none.
Councilman Hill.
I do. Item number six, I will be recusing myself on because I own property within 500 feet of that portions of that program. Item number seven, I've been in construction 40 years and I cannot tell you what a protected permissive left turn phasing is as compared to a protected left turn phasing versus a left turn protected.
It sounds vaguely salacious to me, but I'd be interested in your response.
It gets a little confusing at times, but when you have left turn lanes, there's three types of left turn lanes, and you have a permissive left turn, which is basically you get a green ball and you have the option to turn. You have to yield the oncoming traffic. You also have a protected, which is the green arrow, which you have a free turn and the PEDs and everybody else is held. And then a hybrid of that is the protective-permissive, where we kind of get the best of both. We allow you to get the protected going, which gets the queue emptied out, but in this particular intersection, you have a lot of pedestrians, so once the green arrows work, then you're allowed to be permissive. You can still go, but you'll, you know, if there's no pedestrians, there's no oncoming traffic. So there's the three types there. Did I answer your question?
Good enough, I guess.
Mayor Potemcurry?
I...
Oh, I'm sorry, you have more? More? You've already had two.
Sorry. I'm going to try to find it now. Item number nine on the tree reimbursement, are we clear that 100% is the number and not 50%?
We've looked at this pretty carefully, and we believe while some of the language is confusing, though, the later language in that agreement does say that we're obligated to pay 100% of that. We would like to discuss this further with you when the item comes up, so we'll be pulling it off of consent to discuss what our alternatives are going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Potemcurry?
No items.
And I have one, number 11. This is the refuse container collection, and I just noticed that there's a pretty big gap in between the winning bid and the runner-up, and just are we comfortable with their experience and have we dealt with them before?
Mayor Gardner, we are. We've dealt with them before. They've been a franchise taller in the city for quite a few years. We met with the owner of the company. We went through all of the equipment, personnel needs, the routes, and we're very comfortable with giving them the shot, so.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. State of the harbor and overview of the Harbor Commission objectives. Chris Miller, are you leading off, or is the head of the Harbor Commission?
Good afternoon, Mayor Gardner, Council. On behalf of the Newport Harbor Commission, we thank you for this opportunity to present a brief overview of the current state of the harbor and to review with you the 2012-2013 objectives that we've developed to define the main focus of the Harbor Commission's work this year. I'm Doug West. I'm this year's Harbor Commission Chair, and with me today...
Lights, please.
...are several of our commissioners.
Lights, please.
Duncan McIntosh, our Vice Chair. Brad Avery, who will arrive shortly, I'm sure, our Secretary. Ralph Rodheim, now in his final year of 11 years as a Harbor Commissioner. Karen Rhine, now in her second year of her second term as a Harbor Commissioner. And our newest members, both appointed this year, Commissioners Paul Blank and David Gerling, whom I believe is about to arrive. To strengthen our communication with the Council, we've established these pairings with each of us taking responsibility for maintaining a close connection with each of you on any and all matters concerning the work of the Commission. Let's review briefly the current state of our harbor. We begin with a sincere expression of thanks. Thanks for the priorities you've established and the significant results this Council has achieved over the last several years, all to the benefit of the harbor. While much remains to be done and there are outstanding issues, the current state of Newport Harbor is sound, and we believe that the state of the harbor has never been better than it is today. The dredging projects completed in both the upper and lower bays during the past seven years have significantly improved the environmental health, navigation, and general condition of both bays. All of this was accomplished through the dedication of significant financial resources and skillful work across federal, state, county, and Newport Beach jurisdictions and political boundaries. We say well done. This slide captures scenes from the three dredging projects in the upper bay, the Rhine Channel, and the lower bay over the past seven years. The upper bay dredging project spanning the years 2006 to 2010 was a major ecosystem restoration project involving state, county, and city participation. The project removed 2.1 million cubic yards of material from the upper bay, reestablished a valuable habitat, and created two large catch basins, which now promote the longer-term health of both the upper and lower bays. Forgive me if I'm reviewing things that you know, but I think it's important when we look at it in rather comprehensively and appreciate the scope of everything that's been done. The Rhine Channel dredging project completed last year by the city alone at a cost of about $4 million removed 100,000 cubic yards of contaminated material not suitable for ocean disposal, but was transferred to the Port of Long Beach at a savings of at least $10 million as compared to the potential cost of the inland disposal options. The lower bay dredging project, on schedule for completion in the first quarter of next year, is the most significant dredging project since our harbor was established as a federal harbor in 1936. At a total cost of about $10.5 million, including contributions from the federal government, Orange County, and approximately $5 million from the city, this project will have moved 450,000 cubic yards of material for ocean disposal at LA3 and 112,000 cubic yards of contaminated material to the Port of Long Beach. This slide shows the many areas of our harbor that have benefited from the project. The four public dock projects completed within the past two years have yielded the improvement of three pre-existing docks and the creation of one completely new installation. The Harbor Commission played an important role in advocating these projects, and we thank the Council for your support in completing them. The all-new 100-foot dock at the head of Rhine Channel creates public access to a part of the harbor that simply did not exist before. There was no access in that part of the harbor. We continue to receive many enthusiastic comments from Newport Beach residents, harbor visitors, and local businesses for this new dock. The dock has been discovered by boaters and is regularly in use by larger boats, by duffies and dinghies, all bringing users to the Rhine Channel area attractions, restaurants, and other businesses. The public dock improvements at 15th Street, at 19th Street, and Fernando Street are all creating a more user-friendly configuration, added dinghy space, and more user-friendly time limits. Public access and regular use are up significantly at all three locations. In the history of Newport Harbor, there is no better example of citizen involvement than the mooring field realignment project, which in conjunction with the lower bay dredging project is now nearly complete. Led by the Harbor Commission, its mooring master plan subcommittee, and the Newport Mooring Association, this project establishes a new mooring field plan for our harbor, which over many years had become poorly defined and very much out of position. The new mooring plan is now approved and recognized by both the Coast Guard and NOAA on official Newport Harbor navigation charts. For the countless hours of work contributed over the last seven years, we thank particularly former Commissioner Duffield and members of the Newport Mooring Association, without whom this would not have been accomplished. The Complete Cruising Guide to Newport Harbor, now in its second edition, and I believe you all have copies of that before you, was first published two years ago by the Harbor Commission with the city's full support. It was originally conceived as an outreach to visiting boaters up and down the Southern California coast, but we find that the guide also has become a useful reference for many local boaters. Available both as this booklet and on the city's website, it helps make harbor area attractions and businesses more accessible and friendly to visitors and locals alike. Looking ahead to other work now underway in the harbor, we highlight the Marina Park Project, the foundation of a tidlin's capital plan accomplished this year by the tidlin's management committee, the mooring support services at Balboa Yacht Basin, and the Balboa Marina Public Dock, now under development in partnership with Irvine Company, which will provide new public access in the north end of the harbor. This brief overview of many recent accomplishments and the significant work still underway supports our conclusion that the state of the harbor is sound. It's never been better. Again, we thank you for the Council's harbor focus and support, without which this state of the harbor would not have been achieved. We'd like now to turn to a review of the Commission's objectives for this year, 2012-13. We group our objectives under two overarching purposes, which we view as fundamental to the role of the Harbor Commission. First is ensuring the long-term welfare of the harbor, and second, promoting Newport Harbor as a preferred and welcoming destination. Our first objective in the long-term welfare category aims at identifying possible solutions to two significant obstacles to private dock and channel maintenance dredging. In short, the very difficult permitting process involved in the RGP 54 requirements have all but driven our local small-scale dredging operations out of business. It is virtually impossible to conduct such a small-scale project these days. We have no preconceived solution at this point, but only the conviction that there may well be a better way than the way we've been following. And we are investigating the strategies used by other California harbor communities to learn if better permitting options may exist that could be adopted here. This objective is among our highest priorities. Lower Castaways is the last undeveloped publicly-owned waterfront property in Newport Harbor. We are actively seeking ideas from the harbor community for recommendations to the Council on how this important property could best be used for the benefit of the public. There was a longstanding concern on the Harbor Commission and throughout the harbor community about the erosion of harbor line boundaries and the related issue of vessel overhang enforcement that exists in certain areas of the harbor. We're approaching these related problems first by engaging the Army Corps of Engineers and city staff to determine if there's a willingness to address the fundamental harbor lines' challenge, and if so, a possible course of action towards reestablishing these lines and achieving new compliance. One of the fundamental purposes of the Harbor Commission is to advise the city of any reasonable concern about consistent violations of the harbor code. Two examples include the application of the harbor code's speed limit to sail in human-powered racing events and the presence of derelict vessels in the harbor. Those are examples of two harbor code enforcement issues that we are currently addressing. Boating education opportunities for beginners, for novices, and experts alike is vital to the long-term thriving of our harbor community. The Commission is taking a careful look at strategies to better ensure that future. Harborfront access for businesses which depend on water access for their livelihood is an ever-increasing concern. We are working to identify strategies to maintain water-related businesses on the harbor and intend to bring any we judge workable to your attention. We believe strongly in the Commission's role as a citizens advisory voice for the community. We think that we have not been effective in communicating an understanding of the Commission's citizens advisory role and purpose, and we aim to develop a more effective public communication, which we will, of course, coordinate with the city and the public communications officer. The Commission continues to study various types of multiple-vessel mooring systems as one way of increasing the capacity and the efficiency of the harbor's offshore mooring fields. This photo shows one such design now in use in the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field. Our second group of objectives are aimed at promoting Newport Harbor as a preferred and welcoming destination. We've begun a collaboration with Gary Sherwin and his team at Visit Newport Beach to develop ways of making Newport Harbor an even more attractive destination for visiting cruisers. We're looking for ways to increase our visitor count, improve the visitor experience, and support the businesses that serve all harbor users. The lower bay dredging project made it necessary to relocate our public anchorage from the east end of Lido to a temporary location in the turning basin adjacent to the Lido Bridge. Some are urging the city to maintain the turning basin anchorage even after the original anchorage location has been reestablished following the dredging. The Commission is evaluating the pros and cons of that idea and will develop a clear recommendation to harbor resources and the Council. Our state-of-the-harbor presentation a few moments ago highlighted the four public pier projects completed last year, all of which had been advocated by the Commission. The Commission continues to evaluate public piers and will deliver recommendations for repositioning or developing additional piers to improve public access to harbor area businesses and amenities if appropriate. So this completes our state-of-the-harbor remarks and presentation of our annual objectives. Again, we want to thank the Council for your intensity of focus on harbor-related issues and opportunities and for everything that's been accomplished. We also ask for your approval and support of our objectives that we reviewed with you today, and we welcome any comments or questions. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Are there any questions? Councilman Hill?
I would just make the initial comment that in my short two-year tenure on the Council, I think this is the most comprehensive commission report I've seen.
Okay.
And I like the format, and I like the clearness of the objectives and the names of the people that are carrying the load on it, and I think that will be very helpful. I just had a personal question. On the anchorage's under consideration, the one that's in the turning basin, when we see boats raft together for party weekends and that type of thing there, which I think is great, do they have to get a special permit for that, or do they just do it?
I'm going to turn to the Harbor Resources Department on that. I think it may depend on the scale of what they have in mind, but Chris?
Generally, for the raft ups, they would do it like for a Saturday or perhaps a Saturday and Sunday. They would get permission from the Harbor Patrol, make sure that there's not another conflicting raft up. We had some issues this past summer, admittedly, and the Harbor Commission heard about them in the new area or the temporary area, and we've since addressed those with the Harbor Patrol so that the loud parties don't continue.
Those sorts of raft ups events have occurred historically at the established mooring at the east end of Lido. They did come to the attention of people adjacent to the temporary mooring, and we did hear about some of those events. I mentioned in the presentation that some are advocating that that more anchorage be retained, some are advocating that it not be retained. It's a mixed position.
I think they look like a lot of fun. I'm just sorry I was never invited.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, well, I think it's interesting that we didn't receive one single complaint, so far at least, on all of this harbor dredging with those great big machines clanking and lights and going on 24 hours, but we had some complaints about raft ups. But, you know, I echo Councilmember Hill's comments, and especially I felt it was nice to see the list of accomplishments, actually, which is really long and really substantive. Combination of great staff work, leadership from the Harbor Commission, and leadership up here on this dais, and I think it's just, it's really nice. There's no question that we have invested and are continuing to invest large amounts of money and energy in the improvement of the harbor. I would comment on your list of objectives that it's a long list of objectives, and I'm wondering if you are intending actually to accomplish all of those in the coming year, or if this is more of a multi-year list of priorities.
I think we're expecting to make progress, significant progress on each of those. We're taking names at every meeting.
Yeah.
And we're keeping track of what we promised to do.
Yeah.
We promised ourselves.
Well, I didn't see anything on that list that I would argue with. I think it's more an issue of prioritization of the effort to identifying the most...
A number of those issues have been on the agenda of the Harbor Commission for a couple of years, but they remain to be important, and yes, it is a question of figuring out which are most important. As I mentioned, we think that the search for potential alternatives to dredging permitting may be our very highest priority. That's a significant challenge for anyone on the harbor.
Mayor Potemcurry?
Well, I would just like to thank the Commission for this presentation. I thought it was an excellent presentation. I think this is an example of why Newport Beach is such a great city, is because we have involved and active community leaders who are making things happen on the various committees and commissions that serve the city. And I just want to thank all of the commissioners, past and present, for their contribution to this great, to work. You know, some people get up week after week and complain about things, but the people who make the city a better place to live are people like the commissioners who get involved and really make a difference. This is a $29 million, five-year capital plan to keep our harbor the resource that it is, the economic jewel of our community, and I just want to thank the Commission for all of your great work in making this reality.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, thank you for your articulate presentation, and... And the Regional, the RGP 54, what are we seeing as the obstacles with that?
Chris, do you want to?
Well, I think Chris could certainly comment. I'd like to say a word. It's, first of all, extraordinarily expensive. When we look at the cost, the cost-benefit, it's challenging, and it is cumbersome. The permitting process itself under RGP 54 is very cumbersome and expensive. And our ability, the community's ability to move material is quite limited, and that's part of what makes it so doubtful from a cost-benefit standpoint.
So is it conditions imposed by a federal agency that's creating the?
Yes.
Okay.
Not just federal. Chris, do you want to fill that out?
Sure. So, the RGP has limits and restrictions that are by state and federal agencies, the Coastal Commission, the Corps, and the Water Board, things that we've lived with before, but primarily EOGRAAS, which wraps into a different conversation that is part of that. Tomorrow night at the Harbor Commission meeting, we'll be agendizing the topic of the next RGP 54, and quite frankly, we're going to explore other options as to different ways to approach that permit. When you look at, from just a pure dollars and cents perspective and amount of users who are using the permit each year, there is a disproportionate amount of money that's being spent with a handful of users. And there are reasons why those handful of users are only using it, but maybe there's a different way to crack that egg. And so I would hope that, I'm asking the Harbor Commission to, tomorrow night, to come back and work with us internally and come back in January with a step forward that we'll probably have to come to council with and take some quick action because the next permit's coming up in 2014.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any public comment on this item? All right, well, thank you very much. And now to the Tidlands Infrastructure Capital Plan.
While Chris is getting this set up, I'll just comment, as chairman of the Tidlands Management Committee, this is one of the key objectives that the committee had when it was formed, better than a year ago. And the idea here is to provide some real proactive thought and guidance about where we want to focus resources in the harbor. And I think, I'm happy that we have completed this plan, but really, we only see this as a, this year's effort. This is a plan that would have to be reviewed and revised every single year to continue to make it relevant. So, Chris, with that, go ahead.
Thank you. Lights, please. Well, thank you for the introduction. This is our five-year capital plan that the Tidlands Management Committee put together. And just a brief refresher on who the Tidlands Management Committee is, formed about a year and a half ago in 2011, Chair, Councilmember Hen, Gardner, and Selich. We had a very active citizens advisory committee of Don Lorenz, Linda Benford, Jeff Herdman, John Crowe, Jerry King, Win Fuller, Terry Hartman, and Doug West. And I really have to give the citizens advisory committee a lot of credit for what we're about to see on the screen here, because it was, not only did they participate during the meetings, which we had monthly, but they also met outside of our regular meetings and helped refine our plan. So the Tidlands Management Committee, their purpose, and this is really in basic terms, was to establish a long-term vision for our major Tidlands components, to create and adopt a Tidlands Capital Plan, which is mostly our topic this afternoon, and to research and consider and recommend appropriate governance structures. The evolution of the Tidlands Capital Plan, let's see, I think that's my next slide. Yes. So how we got here today, most of our Tidlands Management Committee meetings consisted of regular updates on harbor issues and plans and things of that nature that folks were interested in, but then inevitably, almost every single meeting had either an agenda item or a brief update of the Tidlands Capital Plan. So this was a plan that we literally started with from day one, meeting one, and it began as a huge catch-all of everything that we could possibly think of that would be considered a project for the harbor, everything from the major lower bay dredging down to putting new finials on our public docks. You know, and so we started with this big, huge basket, and we very quickly realized that we were dealing with something that was quite a bit to handle. And it actually slowed us down because we were focusing on kind of the bigger picture and all these large projects, and we couldn't focus ourselves. So eventually, we did. And we came up with the plan that you're about to see on my next slide. The Tidlands Management Committee approved this final plan in August of 2011, and so this afternoon, what we're doing is we're reviewing it with the council to solicit feedback, and then our goal is to bring it to council in two weeks to have it formally adopted.
It was actually 2012. We're not quite that slow. You said August 2011.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Forgive me. So, this is the plan, and I'm not sure, did you want me to go through line by line, or do you want me to, would you like for me to speak in more general terms?
I think if you hit the highlights, that would be good.
Okay. Well, how this is organized is, it's basically, we have our fiscal year column right here, and then we have identified these projects as either a capital plan or a maintenance, like every-year maintenance-style plan. And then likewise, we've jumped over to this column, and this would be our capital column for the estimated costs that we have, and then our maintenance costs. Maintenance costs are fluid. They, they're typically not necessarily high-dollar amounts. They can ebb and flow and change as years go on, but this is a list of, let's see, of maintenance projects that we have for this coming year. Couple of highlights would be Babo Island Bulkhead Assessment, not building, but assessment, looking at our Babo Marina public dock, doing some Babo Yacht Basin mooring support services, which we saw in the previous presentation, continue our mooring field realignment, of course, some dredging work, and some tide gate work in Marina Park. So, these are all projects that we can work on this year. And then if you look at 2014, this number right here, this is just a large number that we could, we could throw anything in that, but our budget basically is $1.5 million in the maintenance side of things. On the capital side, of course, we're working on the lower bay dredging project. We've already completed the Rhine Channel project, and we're going to be looking at the Marina portion of the Marina Park facility. So again, we don't have any scheduled capital items in 2014, and then we jumped down to 2015, and again, there's that approximately $1.5 million. We've got Bulkhead, Babo Island Bulkhead Assessment in year three. We've got Seminex Lou dredging of $1.5 million in 2015. I think the large point with this plan is that it's a very good framework or roadmap, however you want to call it, that guides us for the coming years on what we should be spending our money on and what projects we should be looking at. Of course, all this is subject to change. Nothing is in concrete, but again, it gives us a good roadmap to work for.
Are you done, Chris?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I forgot about this slide. This slide is some of our larger projects, like implementing the Babo Island seawall, future lower bay dredging, lower castaways development, west Newport Channel dredging, and future upper bay dredging. Those were, those projects were so large in scope that they kind of took our focus away in our meetings, and we decided to put those under more, greater than five years away. And the numbers were so huge and daunting that we didn't want to confuse it with our five-year goal of dealing with projects that we could handle. So this is the bottom sheet of our plan, and then down under Tidlands Programs, we have water quality and habitat restoration. None of those have dollar figures associated with them. And I might also say, I forgot to mention that all the previous slide, and of course this slide, they all have relevance to our harbor area management plan goals and our harbor and bay element goals. So, and that concludes my presentation.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Leave the lights down for a moment, would you? So, the reason that we have those TBDs up there and this trailing two lists is that these are projects that are very large and generally are not well enough defined yet to really try to assign a priority or a dollar number to. And so this was part of what was causing us to bog down in looking at the Tidlands capital needs. You can see that the overall list, though, is mainly lower harbor-related. We do have more than one kind of Tidlands, of course. We've got ocean Tidlands as well as harbor Tidlands. We've got the Upper Newport Bay, and so the ocean piece and the Upper Newport Bay piece really aren't represented in this. It was really focused on the harbor, the lower harbor. And it's really important that we understand that this list, again, is something that needs to be looked at every single year and updated for relevance and for dollar estimates. I was pleased that, in addition to what you see here, we looked at some other things, for example, dredging inside the horseshoe of Linda Isle and, you know, other projects like that, and we were able to kind of sort out what was an appropriate list of things to try to accomplish in the next five years to give us focus and an actionable plan. And so that was the desire, the total of $29 million worth of spending on the harbor, a lot of which has already been executed, a distinct piece of it's been executed, but still, it gives you a sense of the focus and importance of the harbor and the city's total picture. So, thanks again, Chris, for your hard work and staff's hard work on helping to assemble this. Thanks to the citizens advisory committee that did a lot of work trying to manhandle this list and get it into a manageable prioritization along the way. That was very helpful. So, in any event, we think this is a significant accomplishment going forward. It's the first time I'm really aware of that we have had an actual defined capital plan, multi-year capital plan for the harbor.
Councilman Daigle?
Yes, with any plan, you need money to fund it, and if you can kind of give an overview of the funding sources and how that compares against the need.
Well, let's see. The big elephant is lower bay dredging, so that's been funded. I guess I don't, I guess I'm not quite sure how to answer that. Dave could probably help me out. I'll turn to him. We do have, for the $1.5 million, I think those are maintenance funds that can be easily programmed into our annual budget, but for the capital funds, I'll turn to Dave.
Thank you, Chris, and Councilmember Daigle. I think this is, all surrounds the larger discussion we're having about harbor rents in part. You know, we're trying to set fair market rent, but we're also trying to say that there is a reason that we're looking at this more closely than ever, and that is because we have these expectations of the harbor, expectations of harbor costs coming through, because I think, Councilmember Daigle, as you know, the federal resources here are limited. We've been successful in getting about $2.2 million or so for the lower bay dredging project. The upper bay project, I would strongly doubt that it will ever be repeated with federal money, federal or state money. In fact, when the federal government came in and did that project, they basically say, "We're going to do it now, it's up to you to keep it clean and to do it again." So I think we need to look to kind of a bootstrap approach, and that bootstrap approach will include the harbor rents and some general fund contribution to accomplish these projects.
Okay, thank you. And I would agree with that assessment, you know, after the big lift of $50 million, that's not going to happen again in our lifetime. And I did notice, although a lot of great work on the lower bay, I did notice there wasn't much upper bay there, so I have a couple of ones to mention and a potential funding source as well. John Wayne Gulch, we've been talking about that one for years. And then there's a hole up there that a dog fell in, and before it's another person, if we can sort of maybe set aside some for some of the maintenance, I think that would be helpful. And several years ago, there was a lawsuit that was settled, it was about $3.4 million, and the Irvine Company generously dedicated that money towards some of these improvement projects. And Big Canyon was on the list as well. I don't know if that's sort of fallen off because of the obstacles with permitting and the selenium and so on. But those would be, that would be my feedback as to how we can also fold in some of those projects with a funding source. And then on the, I was noticing with the RGP and the EOGRAAS, both of those really involving agency relationships, and, you know, you either have them or you don't, and I think really part of our success with Port of Long Beach was we had a consultant that had those relationships. So that, to the extent that we can find people to help us with that, I think it will cause our community to make further progress on what are really difficult issues, but great work on that plan.
Any other comments or questions from Councilman Selich?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the rest of the council, one project on here that's of particular interest to me is the Grand Canal dredging. There's a lot of interest on Babo Island on that project, and we are going to be rebuilding the Park Avenue Bridge within the same timeframe, and that's going to be funded by state funds. And then we're also dealing with the issue of rebuilding the seawalls in the Grand Canal, so there's three projects that are going to need to be coordinated together there to get completed. So I'm looking forward at some point, the staff to put together some type of flow chart that shows how these three projects are going to move ahead and how we're going to coordinate them so that we get them done, and also get them done in a way that we don't create unnecessary construction disruption on Babo Island. It's very tight on the island there, and so any construction that takes place, it's very sensitive to the residents. So, anyway, it's something that we really need to be sure that we coordinate.
Councilman Hill?
I understand, I think the report is great, and the fact that we have it for the first time is tremendous. I understand the difficulty in budgeting huge projects years and years out, you can never be accurate, but as I heard the discussion, it kind of reminded me if that was the discussion about employee benefit packages 10 years ago. And it seems to me that, you know, maybe there ought to be some kind of attempt to throw some kind of mud on the wall as to, you know, a ROM, rough order of magnitude number, just so that we knew what, you know, if nothing else, assuming when you see it, it's impossible to do all of it, you know, which one might we rate as the highest priority as we get, you know, in the next five years to start to look at it, because I don't think we can just ignore it and pretend that it's not going to be there.
Thank you. Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I'd respond briefly, and then Dave may want to say. We do have some rough order of magnitude on some of these other line items, but probably more important, we have line items in the maintenance budget that are going to help us understand better than a rough order of magnitude what the needs are with these very large projects. And so we are going to move forward incrementally to address them, but on the basis of better facts and analysis.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Hen, in tag-teaming on to that. I do think when the Tidlands Management Committee and the Citizens Advisory Panel did throw numbers at that, the numbers were so significant that they were a distraction from, well, what can we accomplish now? So, as Councilmember Hen is...
So, as Councilmember Hen is noting, it's, let's do the design work and the permitting work to understand what those costs might be. I'm going to highlight just a couple of points. One is that it's all, whenever we print a document like this, and I think it's good that we do, I need to caution everybody that this is not a budget. This is a plan of costs. And as Councilmember DeGel is noting, where will the revenues come from? And that's uncertain. So, if someone points to this and said, "City, you promised you would do this in this year," this is indeed a wish list. It's not a budget for those action items. And one of those that I'd highlight along those lines is the Seminole Slough dredging. And as folks know around, as Councilmember Rosansky knows and the folks around Newport shores know, the Army Corps is starting its project fairly quickly, they may have started already, I haven't been out that way, to dredge its side of the slough, which is the side closest to the Santa Ana River. And we were hopeful that we would tag on to that and do our side at the same time. But because of some permitting issues, a little bit of, I think it was chlordain or something that was found on our side, probably a residual pesticide, we were not able to get the permitting to go through that and match on. And at the same time, we were surprised the Corps moved as quickly as it did. So, we didn't have the money budgeted either. So, we're looking at this in 2015, just to be very clear to the public. We do want to get it done. We have a commitment to get it done, but it'll be a little ways away. And the good news is, by that time, the Corps will be done and stuff won't flow back into our side when we clean it up.
All right. Is there public comment on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I thought I'd comment on the two things that have preceded us here, because I'm one of the very few people in this room whose continuity with all of those and many other things dates back to at least 1999. And I wanted to describe a couple of aspects of that experience that are important in going forward with the Harbor Commission, going forward with this. And those are that, one, when we started out, we were initially members, some of us were members of the Water Quality Committee or attending meetings of it, at least. And we kept pestering the meeting with questions related to other aspects of the harbor enough that somebody suggested, one councilperson or councilpersons at that time suggested the idea of a Harbor Committee, separate entity, dealing with the harbor issues and capturing the expertise and experience that was unique to that. Also overlapped water quality, certainly, because the two are not totally separable, but was sufficiently versed in the origins of the harbor as a working harbor and its transition to the kind of harbor we have today. And that was tremendous. And I was fortunate to, as a newbie in town at that time, I was fortunate to be around those people. And then, when it transitioned once again, at the recommendation of council members at that time, to a Harbor Commission, one of the great delights of that was that we were a bunch of kids who liked to play in the water, all playing together. And I say this only by way of analogy, because it's really important that when you've got something that's this complex and has so many refinements, that you retain those kids, those people that have the depth of experience and expertise that carries through the continuity. And you saw here an extraordinary presentation echoing those that we gave to prior councils back in the mid-2000s, when we had something to talk about that we'd actually accomplished as a commission. And we wanted to tell you about it, not necessarily you, but your predecessors. And we received similar positive reinforcement at that time. And the interesting thing was that we had accomplished those from a base of a diverse group of personalities and approaches to participation in meetings and attitudes and so forth. A wilder collection of folks, I don't think you could find outside of a good sailor's bar than was our Harbor Commission at that time. But we put aside, I think for the most part, individual concerns or political interests to work together. And we were able, in doing that, to attract the participation of members of the public who we were asked to try to incorporate into our efforts, in the same way that we were asked at that time to help contribute to what was then a very skeleton, still skeleton, I guess, staff, very beginning or temporary staff that was passing through a transition. So, a lot of us contributed expertise and resource materials and so forth that way. That kind of a dynamic works best when it's not subject to excessive oversight. I mean, somebody's got to be the teacher and tell the kids to stay in line and follow Robert's Rules of Order. And for that, I would thank very much a gentleman that's sitting in front of us, who, in his role as the Assistant City Manager, was always in the back of the room, sort of alternately smiling and scowling, but was always available when we got out of our depth on procedural issues or issues of funding or other things that were brand-new to us at that time and remained a continuing source of interest to us. And we could ask Dave, or Dave would warn us when we were getting into situations. And we had, it was a good dynamic of peers. That, I'll close by saying that it needs to move forward that way and avoid a situation in which, for whatever reasons, local government decides that those kinds of groups of people and those kinds of processes require more and deeper minding.
All right, thank you very much.
Minding is a subject of other types of government, not ours.
All right, thank you. That certainly leads into our next subject. Is there any public comment, additional public comment? All right. The next is a discussion of a proposed reorganization of several committees. And this came out of the tidestones management work. And while the, when the tidestones management committee was formed, there was a certain, I think, unease on the part of Harbor Commissioners, not sure of how the Harbor Commission's role was changing or where it would be impacted. And after the tidestones management committee completed its essential work, the three members of that committee, Councilman Hen, Selich, and myself, talked about that. And I had noticed, as being on the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee and also liaison to the Harbor Commission, that there were areas of confusion between the Harbor Commission and the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee as to where the responsibilities were. And so, what did we do? We sat down and made a proposal of how to, what we think, actually strengthen both committees and really clarify their roles. And to use the tidestones management, what do we call that, plan, capital plan, as the basis, that we want the Harbor Commission in particular to be the implementer. So, this is what this subcommittee is proposing.
So, thank you.
Lights, please.
So, I'll just go through these items, but please feel free to interject as you see fit. The Council Task Force on Committees was formed in September of this year, and its purpose was really to review the committees and review the housekeeping issues with the various committees that the city council has, particularly looking at committee terms, member terms, chairperson appointments, when we meet, where we meet, and the public input process, and so on and so forth. So, I guess I'll just jump right into what the proposed changes for the Harbor Commission would be. And again, these are fairly brief, just to make them fit on my slides, so please feel free to interject. But the proposal would be to change the Harbor Commission to a Harbor Tidestones Management Committee. Its mission would be to advise the council on matters affecting the tidestones and Newport Harbor. And there would be membership of seven members, as we do now with the Harbor Commission, but with, but there would be the addition of two council members. And there's been some discussion on whether those council members would be voting or non-voting, and we can discuss that or work that out later. The term would be four years with two consecutive terms, and it'd be subject to the Brown Act. So, the purpose and responsibility for the Harbor Tidestones Management Committee would be more or less what the Harbor Commission does right now, which is advise the council, well, they don't do this first bullet point, but it would be to advise the council on the tidestones capital plan, which is, which was what we just reviewed a few minutes ago. Also, to advise the council on matters pertaining to the use, control, and operation of vessels. That's what the commission currently does. Advise on harbor permit applications, approve and disapprove them. Advise the planning commission in the council on land use development applications, which is what we do now. And recommend regulations and programs. And also, serve as an appellate and reviewing body for when folks, let's say they have a dock project and Harbor Resources has to deny them based on our rules, well, then they go to the Harbor Commission. And then, of course, it goes on up to council from there. So, this is really my last slide on the Harbor Tidestones Management Committee. My next two slides will be on the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee. Are there any comments now on this, or should I continue on?
One of the, or a concern that was brought to my attention to the community, you mentioned in your first slide, probably didn't have room in your second slide, how the chairperson would be selected. And I did a little bit of research, and I noticed in the charter on, I think it's section 704, it talks about how elections occur from within a committee or a commission. It hasn't been, maybe we've been doing it in aviation, but if you can maybe address that.
I guess I would defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, there is a process set out for commissions. However, as a committee, the resolution forming the committee could basically designate who is going to be the chairman, or you have some more flexibility.
Right, okay. So, the charter is commissions and boards is elected within, but committee is in flexibility?
Yes, there's more flexibility with committees.
Thank you.
So, moving ahead to my last two slides is just to outline the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee. They would, their name is proposed to be changed to the Water Quality Coastal Management Committee. Their mission would be to improve and preserve the Newport Beach coastline and Newport Bay as a resource for recreational use and as a healthy habitat. Their membership would be seven members plus two council members for a full, four-year term, and of course, subject to the Brown Act, which is what we are doing right now. Their purpose and responsibility would be to advise the council on projects that support and strengthen existing regulations to protect water quality. In addition, the second bullet point would be to advise the council on programs that improve water quality in the bay and the ocean. Advise the council on tidestones capital plan, which is, again, the plan we had just looked at in the following areas, sea level rise, and particularly how it affects ocean beaches. Because, again, the Harbor Commission would be looking at the harbor beaches, and the, this committee would be looking at ocean beaches, ocean beach sand replenishment, and other capital projects that are not covered by the Harbor Tidestones Management Committee. And then, of course, advise the council on policies, programs, and projects that educate the watershed's population about, and value about the bay and the ocean. And so, those are basically all the slides that I have on this, and I think the intent of the committee was to open up for discussion.
Yes, we will, we're intending to bring it to council for approval in two weeks, so we wanted to get as much input as possible. Councilman Hen.
Yeah, let me, I'd just provide just a little more perspective on this. When I suggested that we should form a tidestones management committee a couple of years ago, it was driven out of a desire to really get the council focused in a very proactive way on the management and improvement of the harbor. And when we formed it, we knew that it would be not a permanent committee. It was an ad hoc committee, and those are not supposed to be permanent. And so, that committee did a lot of work. It's still got one item that it hasn't completed, and that is to provide a governance structure, if you will, for the spending of, especially the increased fee revenue that's being discussed now in other forums, to assure that that spending does get spent on the tidestones and on projects that are of importance, which is why the tidestones infrastructure capital plan is such an important document. It gives us some guidance in that respect. So, with that, the tidestones management committee is really coming up on its expiry. We don't intend to continue it in existence. And yet, the original desire that gave impetus to that committee remains, and that is to provide proactive management and improvement and maintenance for the harbor tidestones. And so, the idea here is for this Harbor Tidestones Management Committee to provide ongoing, forever, if you will, management and improvement and protection and welfare of the harbor, basically the lower harbor, which is mainly navigational and recreational in nature. And then, to complement that with the, a somewhat revised coastal tidestones committee, such that the two of them, taken together, will provide long-term guidance, guidance and proactive management for all of the city's tidestones without getting each other's way. And so, that's the idea. One of the things that, my impression at least, is in terms of Harbor Commission, is that over the years, the Harbor Commission has, from time to time, felt like they haven't been listened to as carefully by council as they might, or perhaps haven't had as much guidance about their objectives from council as they might. And then, we formed this tidestones management committee, which kind of zoomed in and really drove hard to push this dredging project through, along with the tidestones capital plan. And I think the part of the difference there was that the Harbor Commission is a citizens' advisory group. Tidestones Management was a committee of council persons. And so, that tended to ease the way for the rest of the council, in terms of the tidestones management committee at least, to consider their recommendations and move forward with them. The idea here is to meld together the important purposes of the Harbor Commission with the important driver of the formation of the tidestones management committee, in a way, following on to John Caro's comments, that we preserve the special expertise and enthusiasm of harbor participants and meld that with some direct council participation, such that we wind up with the best of both worlds. A commission that is, or excuse me, a committee that is well-guided, very substantive, and very action-oriented, and that will be able to achieve easily the attention of council along the way as it recommends programs for completion. It is not the purpose of this suggestion that, again, following on some of John's comments, that council be sort of a gray eminence in this committee. The purpose here is to provide weight of council with what's going on, such that at the appropriate time, when it matures, to the full council for consideration. Council as a whole knows there was substantive participation, guidance, whatever, suggestions associated with the two council members that were intimately involved along the way. That does give the rest of council some confidence when something does mature up. So, there's a couple of things here that, you know, we need to think through, and that is whether the council members become voting or non-voting. And who is the chairperson of the council? We do have a specific recommendation that will be surfaced to the Harbor Commission for further comment that will cover both of those items. And we're looking for input from our fellow council members, as well as from the public on all of that. This is genuinely an effort here. an effort here to form something in a collaborative way that we all conclude at the end is the right product, at least to start with, and if it doesn't work right, we'll just change it as we go. Thank you.
Other comments from the Council? All right, public comment, please.
Mayor Gardner and members of the Council, throughout this last item, I've been wondering if I am looking at the same agenda that you're looking at. The agenda I have that was in the lobby said item four is titled State of the Harbor Commission: Goals for 2012-2013. I didn't see anything there about the Coastal Water Quality Committee or realigning committees or a report from a subcommittee as part of that, and so I was so startled to hear the presentation coming up. Did I hear correctly, the Harbor Commission that you just praised is now going away, and this new committee is going to replace that?
That is a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
We're only discussing concepts at this time. Nothing will be decided today. There will need to be more public input. We're just suggesting concepts for consideration.
It's on the agenda for the Harbor Commission tomorrow night. Other public comment?
Doug West, I'm here in my individual capacity, not as Chair of the Harbor Commission. As Mayor Gardner just mentioned, we do have this matter on the Harbor Commission agenda for tomorrow evening, and if there could be some further information concerning the, whether or not the proposal involves voting, council voting members or not, and exactly how the agenda setting process might work, I think those are two things that I am thinking about most, most carefully as I consider this proposal, and I hope that we can have a fulsome discussion of tomorrow night's Harbor Commission meeting, and perhaps have one voice from the Commission about this.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Councilmen, Commissioners, I think it all has to do with words and perception. What you have outlined as the duties of the new committee are what the Commission does. I don't have a "or" in here, "I'm termed out, I'm done in June", it doesn't matter to me one way or another, but I think it's a perception, and I think words do make a difference. If you go to the city's organization chart and you look, you will see that you have a series of commissions. You won't find committees until the bottom, 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 and I think for the rest of the world to see that a city of this importance and all the money you're spending in one event has no commission is the wrong way to go about it. The only real difference is what I'm hearing from Councilman Hen is there will be two city council people versus one, which there is now, as a liaison. Humboldt Bay, San Mateo County, Los Angeles, Santa Cruz, Santa Barbara, Long Beach, San Diego, Port, Wayneemi, Oxnard, Moss Landing, Crescent City, Morro Bay, Marina Del Rey, and others all have commissions, and for the city of Newport Beach not to have a Harbor Commission, I think is a real mistake. As far as what they do, I think exactly what you laid out is perfect, and the other committee could be a committee of the Harbor Commission. As far as setting up on the capital, that's what your commission does. You have appointed outstanding commissioners, they're the experts in the harbor, and I really feel it'd be a huge error in not maintaining the word "commission." As far as what they do, that really doesn't matter, but it's the perception of how it works and that, so I hope that's something that you consider.
Sounds like, wasn't Andre Agassi, about the image, the image is everything.
Dan Purcell, Cronin Del Mar, I followed a lot of this, and I like where you're going with this. I am concerned that I don't see anything about the ecology in there. One of our greatest resources is the ecology, the marine life, and I would like to see our city's ecologist be included in the water quality, harbor quality on a regular basis. That marine life is very important. We have well-educated voters, affluent voters, not voters, visitors coming to Newport Beach. We're not Lake Havasu, we're not Las Vegas. They appreciate those things, those things add a lot of value. I'm concerned about the Harbor Commission or whether the new committee will be focusing on promotions. I don't think that should be their role. Again, we're not a Lake Havasu, we're not a, you know, a Las Vegas or whatever. When people come here, do they really want to ride jet skis, have parachute packs, jet packs, things that are really disruptive and hard on the harbor, or can we encourage more passive use type things? And then I want to comment on conflict of interest and such. The gentleman who spoke before me, someone who I really like, respect, admire, and who's given a lot to the committee, is often very conflicted, Mr. Ralph Rodheim, and he has been on the committee 11 years. He serves on a variety of other committees in the city, he's always votes, always speaks at length, often discourages public comment, and he has a financial vested interest in a lot of the things that he speaks to. He owns a business down there at Balboa Village, and so, I, these things are all really, really good, but a lot of it boils down to the people and what they're, what they do, and so I just would express some concern about that.
Dan, when you mentioned the city ecologist, are you speaking of Michelle Clemente?
Michelle Clemente, yes. Our wildlife, our birds and our marine life is very important. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? All right. Seeing none, Mayor Procham Curry?
Well, I guess this frustrates me as a solution in search of a problem. I'm trying to think about, you know, we did actually have a, I think, a pretty well-defined report about what the Harbor Commission's doing, and I think you're doing a great job, so I remain to be convinced about why we need to make these organizational changes, frankly, and I'm also concerned about having council people on a committee that, and then we serve as an appellate board to their decisions, and I'm not sure how that's just going to work mechanically or legally when you're appealing a decision on a body that you sat on, to another body that you sit on. So, that needs to probably be thought through a little bit further, but I think the Commission's doing a great job. I don't see a lot of reasons to no longer have a Harbor Commission. I think the scope of work is that they have is good, and I think what was outlined is, in fact, what they're doing, and we do have a council liaison to the Harbor Commission that helps give them the feedback and the input of the City Council, so I remain to be convinced as to the need for this.
Any other comments? All right, moving on to public comments.
Public comments aren't by now.
They didn't get much feedback.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman Dagle.
I would agree with Mayor Procham Curry's comments. I can say there is a model out there that works successfully that is similar to this, and that's our Citizens Aviation Committee, and it's a situation with our airport. Our airport's kind of different than maybe other activities in the city. It's very high stakes. We have the airport there, so we haven't been willing to, you know, relinquish full control, so it is something that we have council members, and it is a hybrid, and I think we work well, and we have staff, so if it does transition to this, I think there's also an example of where it works as well. So, I wouldn't sort of categorically dismiss it as will never work, but I think what we have in place is okay too, so how was that?
All right, Councilman Hen.
Yeah, just one further thought here, you know, the inclusion of the tidlands infrastructure capital plan in the work of whatever committee goes forward is a big addition compared to what has been in the past. We're talking about formulation and, in effect, management of the spending of a lot of money, and that's a difference, and I think when we get into, when we start crossing the line into the formulation of plans to spend a lot of money, it's helpful to have direct council participation along the way, and I think it takes it a little farther afield from a purely advisory committee, and so, that's part of what the difference is here.
Anything else? All right, public comment.
Public comments are invited on closed session agenda items, as reflected in item two, closed session of the regular meeting agenda, and on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Public comments?
Mayor Gardner and members of the Council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I submitted some written comments on two of the closed session agenda items, and I hope you'll consider those during your private deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session to consider those items on the closed session agenda.